So.
Marvelous grace of our loving Lord, grace that exceeds our sin and our guilt. Yon her on Calvary's mount of gold, there where the blood of the Lamb was still. Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that is greater than all our sin. Sin and despair like the sea when it's full, bread and the soul within man and man. Grace and is greater, yes, grace untold, going to the refuge, the mighty cross. Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that is greater than all our sin. Marvelous infinite, patchless grace, freely bestowed on all who believe. You that are longing to see this grace, will you this moment, if grace receive? Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace, grace that is greater than all our sin.
All right, and the next one's my favorite hymn in the whole world. I am a people person, so when I get sad or when I feel like I don't have friends around me, I have to remember that Jesus is my friend.
You have lots of friends.
So, it's a good one though.
Oh, what a friend we have in Jesus, all our sins and griefs to bear. But our privilege to carry everything to God in prayer. Oh, what peace we often covet, oh, what needless pain we bear. Oh, because we do not carry everything to God in prayer. Have we trials and temptations? Fear, fear trouble anywhere. We should never be disturbed. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Then we find a friend so faithful, whom we'll all our sorrow share. Jesus knows our every weakness. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Far we get heavy laden, covered with the vow of care. Precious Savior still our refuge. Take it to the Lord in prayer. To thy presence, Christ forsake thee. Take it to the Lord in prayer. In his arms still taken shielded. Thou will find us all in the spare.
Very nice, Sam. Thank you.
Sam will know both of those.
All right, well, let's pray before the kids go. Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather together and study your word. Ask that you would open our hearts and minds by the power of the Holy Spirit that we may be taught from your word. And, Lord, we just ask that those who couldn't be here tonight, that you give them a special blessing. We especially lift up Timmy and Liz as they're gonna be going back to their moms. We just pray for them to have a great time and good school year with her. Lord, now we just ask that you'd give us what you need us tonight. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Acts, chapter 13. Acts, chapter 13. So, the last time we were together, we talked about Paul's sermon there at Antioch, Poseidon, and talking to the Jews that were there. And we kind of dived into the message that he preached, but we did not really talk about the reception or the reactions of the people. And back when he was on the island of Cyprus, other than the pro-counsel, Sergius Paulus, Luke doesn't really record much of the reactions of the people there. So, we don't really know how the message was accepted by the Jews as he went to synagogues, as he traveled across that island. So, this is really our first real record of the general reaction to their preaching. We have seen the reaction of the Jews in Jerusalem, which was mostly negative. That reaction, if you'll remember, led to the persecution that forced Christians out of Jerusalem. And they were dispersed. And as they were dispersed and as they were going out, they shared the gospel. That directly led to the establishment of the Antioch Church, which is the sending church for this missionary journey. But I think it's very important to look at this particular set of reactions because this is a very dynamic group of people. This is different than Jerusalem, where it was mostly Jews and everybody kind of understood that. As I mentioned last week, this area did have a pretty good-sized population of Jews, but they were still mostly Gentile. And Luke includes languages that shows that there were a large percentage of Gentile proselytes. Now, these are Gentiles who had converted to Judaism. If you go back and you look at verse 16, he talks about fellow Israelites, that's the Jews, and you who fear God. Listen, those were proselytes. In verse 26, he says the same type of thing. In verse 43, again, he talks about those who feared the Lord. In verse 48, we'll see he also talks about Gentiles. And so, proselytes would have been those who had completely converted to Judaism. So, they would have been following the law, the food law, the clothing law, everything that they could think of. They would try to observe all of the law, observe the Jewish festivals and holidays. And they were doing everything to be Jewish, including circumcision, which becomes a big deal later on. And then, of course, there were no doubt some of these in-betweens, Gentiles who may have had an interest in Judaism, but they weren't really converted. They weren't completely converted. This seems to be the most common. And of course, you have the indifferent Gentiles and those who followed Roman mythology and idols. So, there's a very diverse population here that hears this message and reacts to it. And so, as we see the reactions to Paul's message, notice the different people groups, notice their reactions. Because this time in Antioch, Poseidon, it's gonna set the tone for everything we see in Acts, chapter 14, which is really the rest of the journey. In fact, these are the locations for the churches that Paul writes the letter of Galatians to. And I'll discuss that more in the coming weeks as we look at chapter 14. But you're gonna see common themes arise out of Antioch, Poseidon, Iconium, Lystra, and Derby. And you're gonna see a lot of that. But let's pick up in verse 42, where Paul finishes his sermon. He just got done with the sermon, preaching that Sabbath day. And in verse 42, it says, "As they were leaving, the people urged them to speak about these matters the following Sabbath." "After the synagogue had been dismissed, many of the Jews and devout converts to Judaism followed Paul and Barnabas, who were speaking with them and urging them to continue in the grace of God. The following Sabbath, almost the whole town assembled to hear the word of the Lord. But when the Jews saw the crowds, they were filled with jealousy and began to contradict what Paul was saying, insulting him. Paul and Barnabas boldly replied, 'It was necessary for the word of God to be spoken to you first. Since you reject it and judge yourselves unworthy of eternal life, we are turning to the Gentiles. For this is what the Lord has commanded us. I have made you a light for the Gentiles, to bring salvation to the ends of the earth.'" "When the Gentiles heard this, they rejoiced and honored the word of the Lord, and all who had been appointed to eternal life believed. The word of the Lord spread through the whole region. But the Jews incited the prominent God-fearing women and the leading men of the city. They stirred up persecution against Paul and Barnabas and expelled them from their district. But Paul and Barnabas shook the dust off their feet against them and went to Iconium, and the disciples were filled with joy and the Holy Spirit." And so, as we see this reaction to his message, the first thing I want you to notice is that there is an initial interest. Don't confuse interest with acceptance, but do notice that there was an initial interest in what was being said. There's an invitation to come back the following Sabbath. And so, that may not be an indication of their particular thoughts about the message, but they did want more information. "As they were leaving, people urged them to speak about these matters the following Sabbath." So, this message from Paul was intriguing. And I have no doubt that they had heard some of the rumblings coming out of Jerusalem or when some of the Jews had traveled to Jerusalem. Now, we've gotta remember the timeline. That's one thing that a lot of people miss in the book of Acts, is the timeline. So, when you think about this, this is taking place in the mid-to-late 400s A.D., right? So, this is at least 10 to 12 years after Jesus's resurrection. So, there's already been some chatter. There's already been some things going on. And so, there's no doubt that they heard some of that. However, they have a person here who has firsthand knowledge. And so, there's a little bit of interest about what is going on. But the greater point is that they did ask him to return. But specifically, who asked him to return? Luke uses specific language from this point forward as he refers to the different group. Back in 15, he said, "The leaders of the synagogue asked him, 'Hey, do you men have anything to say to us?'" Right? And as I pointed out, the Jews and those who were devoted to God, Luke uses that language very plainly. Here in verse 43, again, we see these two groups. But in verse 42, Luke records, "The people were the ones who asked him to return and who followed them to keep talking." It was the general population that showed interest in learning more. It wasn't the leaders of the synagogue, it was the general population. One later manuscript actually uses the word "Gentiles" instead of "people", which is why the King James Version and the New King James use "Gentiles" instead of "people." This was probably changed in later manuscripts for clarity because of the implications throughout the text. But obviously, the major interest here comes from Gentiles or those in Judaism who were interested in some way. And they were considered it. So, why is this message so intriguing to the Gentiles? Well, let's look back at the sermon that he preached. Look at verse 38 and 39. "Therefore, let it be known to you, brothers and sisters, that through this man, Jesus, forgiveness of sins is being proclaimed to you. Everyone who believes is justified through him from everything that you could not be justified from through the law of Moses." So, he's saying forgiveness from sins through the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. The Jewish population, their understanding of sin was twofold. Number one, sin has to be avoided. And that meant that they had to meticulously figure out how to avoid sin. We had to define it with a very, very strict line. And they had so meticulously defined and focused on sin that the Ten Commandments had expanded to 613 laws. And then, there were all kinds of rules and regulations explaining them. If they said you couldn't work on the Sabbath, well, what is work? Well, they had a specific weight of a rock that you could carry or how far you could walk or what could and could not be done. And they had this complicated system that was so legalistic that this is what Jesus said about it. "They tied up heavy burdens, hard to bear, and lay them on people's shoulders." They put this complicated burden and this system on them all as a way to help them not sin against God because sin, they just had to avoid it. They had to avoid it at all costs. And so, they drew these very legalistic lines. Legalism is not the key to freedom from guilt, shame, and the burden of sin. Jesus is. Now, I'm not saying that sin doesn't matter or that we can live however we want to because we're taught by the Holy Spirit through the pen of Paul in Romans, chapter 6. Listen to what he said. What should we say then? Should we continue in sin so that grace may multiply? Absolutely not. How can we, who died to sin, still live in it? Or if you were unaware, that all who were baptized in Christ Jesus were baptized into his death. "Therefore, we are buried with him by baptism into death in order that, just as Christ was raised from the dead by the glory of the Father, so we too may walk in the newness of life. For if we have been united with him in the likeness of his death, we will certainly also be in the likeness of his resurrection. For we know that our old self was crucified with him so that the body ruled by sin might be rendered powerless, so that we may no longer be enslaved to sin, since a person who has died is free from sin." Now, if we died with Christ, we believe that we also live with him because we know that Christ, having been raised from the dead, will not die again. Death no longer rules over him. For the death he died, he died to sin once for all time, but the life he lives, he lives to God. So, you too, consider yourselves dead to sin and alive to God in Christ Jesus. "Therefore, do not let sin reign in your mortal body so that you obey its desires and do not offer any parts of it to sin as weapons for unrighteousness. But as those who are alive from dead offer themselves to God and all parts of yourselves are weapons for righteousness, for sin will not rule over you because you are not under the law but under grace." What Paul is saying here and what was so intriguing to the Gentiles that were hearing this, that were considering going under this Jewish system that's so heavily burdensome to avoid offending God, is he's saying overcoming sin is not about a burdening system of rules and regulations. It's about being freed from sin to live as Christ. So, it's not about a burden taken on, it's about a burden lifted off. So, they didn't understand sin properly. And the other issue that they had when looking at sin is they had these burdens so that you can avoid it at all costs. But if you did sin, now it had to be atoned for. How are we gonna deal with it once we did that? You had to make amends, you had to pay a price. Sin has to be punished. I mean, it is rebellion towards God. So, this was the sacrificial system. If you commit this sin, this is the sacrifice that you have to do. Even once a year, the chief priest would go and do a day of atonement. He would go in and make a sacrifice for the nation. And this had to be done continually, year after year, because it's not perfect. So, the Jews that were there in this town had traveled to Jerusalem to go to the temple at different times because a sin needed a sacrifice. And so, when you look at this, this system had actually become quite lucrative for the Jewish religious leaders. And that whole system and the whole idea about going through priests and making amends really was God's idea. You can go back and read it, the first five books of the Old Testament, and in the Torah, it's plain. He did this. But the issue now is twofold. First, they had diverted its original purpose. The original purpose was to be a means of worship. "God have offended you, and I'm gonna make atonement as a means of worship." Now, it had become more of a mechanism of control and profit. And we're gonna dive into that later, but it needed to be stated right here. But secondly, and most importantly, the issue that they have is that that system was fulfilled in Jesus's death, burial, and resurrection. The entire system, as we learn from the book of Hebrews, was simply a shadow of things to come. They all pointed to the Messiah. Jesus fulfilled the law, and there is no need for that old system anymore. And so, when the Gentiles are hearing this, this is very intriguing because they're thinking about going under this very burdensome system. And they're saying that I can have salvation just in Jesus. And so, Paul is confronting this thought process by saying that Jesus lived a perfect life, he was sacrificed for our sins once and for all. And this is something that the law could not do. The law merely pointed to the one who could do it. And so, when the Gentiles hear this, they're like, "Okay, justification by grace through Jesus, that sounds much better than justification by keeping laws and sacrifices and not to mention getting circumcised. Tell me more." They were interested because the message says they can have forgiveness without all the burdensome. And so, following the service, and I suspect for the next few days, Paul and Barnabas interacted and entertained questions from all these interested people about what is going on here? How is all this possible? And so, there was initial interest. The next thing that you'll see is that there's more opposition. We've been talking about opposition and persecution since Jesus. But that's just one of the realities of Christianity. So, when Barnabas and Paul returned the following week, we read that nearly the whole town showed up. Verse 44, "The following Sabbath, almost the whole town assembled to hear the word of the Lord." Whew, that's a lot of people. They all wanted to hear this message. The initial interest had grown over the week. And so, Luke records that this causes the Jews to become jealous. So, let me pause just for a second. Can we just recognize and mention how much trouble jealousy causes? You know, jealousy is rooted in selfishness. And it's about me, 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 and what about me? And we were joking about it this weekend because we had all the cousins together and, you know, we're doing things. And siblings do the same thing. But if one gets something, everybody wants to say, "Why did he get something I didn't have?" It's all selfishness, and we're jealous over that. So, anyway, the Jews got jealous. It was because of the crowd. It says they saw the huge crowd and they got jealous. But was it just the size of the crowd? I don't think so. I think we can reason out, looking at the rest of the text, that it also had to do with the fact that this crowd included a lot of Gentiles. And there would be Gentile salvation. As one commentary puts it, listen to this. "It's one thing to proclaim the coming Messiah to the Jews. It's quite another to maintain that in the Messiah, God accepts the Gentiles on an equal basis." So, the Jews of this time viewed Gentiles as unclean idol worshippers, which most of them were. But Gentile salvation, without full adherence to the law, was just short of blasphemy for them. And they didn't like that. Paul's gonna preach this message, saying they can be saved through Jesus and they don't have to get circumcised, they don't have to eat the right foods, they don't have to do all this and do all that. And so, the large crowd, being mainly Gentiles or majority of Gentiles, challenged both the influence and the revenue for them. Selfish thinking. Well, if this thing blows up, then what are we gonna do for a living? You can look back through history. Anytime there's a new invention that will take a job, there's always a fight. I mean, I understand that people wanna eat, you know? But you know, in the old days, you had to have somebody that controlled the elevator? You weren't allowed to just get on there and push a button yourself? That's because it didn't stop automatically. They had to stop it at the right place. But eventually, it got to where they didn't have a job anymore. And there's a lot of jobs that you can trace that. So, I can kind of understand this, but for them, this is a little bit deeper. The gospel. Salvation from sin through Jesus Christ is more important than money. And it's more important than power. And it's more important than influence. And so, this jealousy and this self-centered thinking caused opposition to the gospel message. You know, as I was praying through this and I was preparing, and I just stopped and I said, "May God help us embrace, say, and act with an attitude of, 'I don't care who gets the credit as long as Jesus gets the glory.'" The jealousy is a problem. And so, they had this jealousy. And the first method that they used, you can see it there in verse 45. It says, "When they saw the crowd, they were filled with jealousy. They began to contradict what Paul was saying." So, their first method was to try and contradict. My assumption is that some of these were the common objections that they had seen come out of Jerusalem. This was common, they would have known that. You can actually go to the book of Galatians and read all about these issues that Paul's having to try and sort out for them. But the core issue is this. What's the source of salvation? Is the source of salvation my good works? Or is the source of salvation Jesus? It's grace versus works. And by the way, the one thing that sets Christianity apart from every other world religion is grace. Every other world religion, you have to earn your salvation. And so, that's kind of the core issue that you'll see. So, there were some arguments there. But when their arguments failed, they turned to insults. You know you want a debate when they start attacking you instead of your argument. That's the tactic of fools, and unfortunately, it's quite successful in persuading more fools to listen. In our society right now, a good burn wins over logic and reason. That doesn't make sense to me, but it does. So, they did that. And then, their last tactic was that they turned to the local leaders. They used their influence with the local leaders. In verse 50, it talks about how the Jews incited prominent God-fearing women and the leading men of the city, and they stirred up persecution. They had Paul and Barnabas expelled from the district and kicked out of their area. And these tactics seemed to be successful in the short term. Actually, it was successful enough that it hounds Paul for the remainder of his earthly life. In his final letter to Timothy, he refers back to this first missionary journey. In 2 Timothy 3, this is what he says. "But know this: Hard times will come in the last days; for people will be lovers of self, lovers of money, boastful, proud, demeaning, disobedient to parents, ungrateful, unholy, unloving, irreconcilable, slanders, without self-control, brutal, without love for what is good, traitors, reckless, conceited, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God, holding to a form of godliness but denying its power. Avoid these people. For among them are those who wormed their way into households and deceived gullible women overwhelmed by sins and led astray by a variety of passions, always learning and never able to come to a knowledge of the truth. But as Janus and Jamborees resisted Moses, so they also resisted truth. They are men who are corrupt in mind and worthless in regard to the faith. But they will make no further progress; for their foolishness will be clear to all as it was for the foolishness of Janus and Jamborees. But you have followed my teaching. Conduct purpose, faith, patience, love, and endurance along with persecutions and sufferings that came to me in Antioch, Iconium, and Lystra. What persecutions I endured! And yet, the Lord rescued me from all of them. In fact, all who want to live a godly life in Christ Jesus will be persecuted. Evil people and imposters will become worse, deceiving and being deceived. But as for you, continuing what you've learned and firmly believe, you know those who taught you." you, and you know that from infancy you have known the sacred scriptures which are able to give you wisdom for salvation through faith in Christ Jesus. All Scripture is inspired by God and is profitable for teaching, for rebuking, for correcting, for training in righteousness, so that the man of God may be complete, equipped for every good word. In his final words to young Timothy about standing firm, about the incoming persecution and all that kind of stuff, he makes reference back to Antioch, Iconium, and Lystra, and the persecutions that he faced there. So the opposition was not just a little. It had enough that it actually carries on into the next cities. We're actually going to see that some of those Jews followed. But don't get discouraged. Paul wasn't discouraged. As it starts to get down through there, and after he had been insulted by them, they have a response to the Jews. And basically, they're telling the Jews that, you know, we had to come tell you first. But now, the Gentiles are also going to hear. So there was some success. And I hesitate to use the word "success," because it can kind of give the false impression that success means measurable. Success in faith is obedience to God. It's faithfulness. It's not budgets, buildings, and butts in the seats, or anything else that we can count. And let me show you this in the text. Look at verse 46 through 49. You're going to see the different reactions between the Jews and the Gentiles. "Paul and Barnabas boldly replied, 'It was necessary that the word of God be spoken to you first. Since you reject it and judge yourselves unworthy of eternal life, we are turning to the Gentiles. For this is what the Lord commanded us: I made you a light for the Gentiles, bring salvation to the ends of the earth.'" "When the Gentiles heard this, they rejoiced and honored the word of the Lord, and all who had been appointed to eternal life believed." So you see the different reactions between the Jews and the Gentiles. Jews rejected it, the Gentiles embraced it. But notice Paul's response to the Jews. This is very important. Paul is recognizing that his job is not to convince them, but to tell them. His success is not in their reactions, but in his faithfulness in bringing the message. The results are between God and them. Now, do I believe God is working? Absolutely. Will people respond? Yes. But they're responding to the message, not the messenger. And to prove this, he quotes a very interesting verse in Isaiah. It's actually found in chapter 49, 6. And it's one of the few verses that give emphasis to the idea that Israel, one of their main purposes, or their main purpose, was to be a light to the world. They were to represent God. And ultimately, the Christ would come through them. They were not to keep God for themselves, but they were to be an ambassador of God to the world. And you can go back and look in the Old Testament over and over and over again. It says, "When you do this, every nation will know that God exists and is real." But I find this very interesting, kind of ironic, that he uses this verse, because Isaiah didn't have a single convert that we know of. They didn't listen to him before. Why does he think they're going to listen to him now? But what he's saying here is that, look, you had your opportunity to be that, and so now, I'm going to tell the Jews. I'm going to let them know what this is. So some people think that this was an announcement of a permanent change in Paul's methods, but it's not, because we'll see in the very next town in Iconium, he goes to the synagogue again, and he preaches to the Jews. So this is not a change in his method. He was talking to those specific Jews. "I've told you the message. Now I'm going to talk to the Gentiles." The success is found among the Gentiles in Antioch Poseidon. And this would become a common trait in Paul's missionary work. Paul never gives up on the Jews. In fact, in Romans chapter 9, I'm not going to, well, I am going to read it. Just listen to what Paul says. "I speak the truth in Christ; I am not lying. My conscience testifies to me through the Holy Spirit, that I have a great sorrow and unceasing anguish in my heart. For I wish that I myself were cursed and cut off from Christ for the benefit of my brothers and sisters, my own flesh and blood. They are Israelites; to them belong the adoption, the glory, the covenants, and the giving of the law, the temple service, and the promises. The ancestors are theirs, and from them by physical descent came the Christ, who is God over all. Praise forever." Paul is saying, "I would give up my salvation if Israel would believe." He didn't give up on them. But the success comes through the Gentiles. Verse 48 tells us that meaning "believe," those who have been appointed to eternal life, believe. A lot of people get caught up on that language. I don't think it's phrased that way to teach or be a basis for free destination or a doctrine of election. What it's demonstrating is that from their perspective, the success is God's doing, not The Bible teaches election and free will. I've never been smart enough, and nobody else is either, to found that. And so what you have to do is look at the beautiful tension that the Bible holds on the two, and say, apparently, my brain is not big enough to understand God's perfect The important lesson here, though, is that what Paul is saying, and what Luke is reporting, is that it wasn't because of Paul's great sermon. It wasn't because anything Paul did. It was between them and God. It's God's responsibility for the results and the success. Our role is to be faithful and obedient to God's guidance. As you look at verse 49, you'll see more success. "The word of the Lord spread through the whole region." And so, of course, this was making the Jews more mad, so they had him kicked out of town. But the message, the power of the message, is what spread. I'm doing Baptist History right now for my class over the summer, and it's very interesting as you look through things, and people always want to say, "Why was this so successful? Or why did this fail?" And we're always looking for these methods and these systems and all that kind of stuff. Sometimes you can't explain it. The message does what the message does. Sometimes you will take this exact same message, go into a place, and it explodes, and you have a megachurch in that little town. And then sometimes, there's missionaries who go, and they preach their entire life and see only a handful of converts. The message does what the message does. Our responsibility is to be faithful and obedient to God's guidance. But then in verses 51 and 52, it brings to a close this idea that these men were not deterred, that they did not see this time in Antioch Poseidon as a failure. It says that they dust off their feet against them and went to Iconium. They said, "Well, our time is done here. Shake the dust off your feet. Let's keep moving." And even though there was enough, or excuse me, even though they had to lead like this, there had been enough growth that on his way back through, we're going to see that Paul appoints elders to lead these new believers in the new churches that were founded. So there's enough there that had created a church. And so now, I want to kind of shift gears just a hair, and I want to ask you some questions to kind of help us think through this. I like to ask questions to help you think throughout the week, but then also kind of wrap your head around some of the application that we get from this. So here's questions to consider this week. What are some factors that have influenced the modern understanding of gospel success? What are some factors that have influenced the modern understanding of gospel success, specifically here in the United States? Number two, as we're going to continue to see persecution of the early church, what are your thoughts? I know a lot of Christians that say, "Oh, we ought to be like the church in the book of Acts." And I'm like, "You really want that? That won't. Sunshine and puppy dog tails, that was rough." But when you think about the persecution they saw and our experience, what are your thoughts? And then the last question is, who in your life is showing some interest in the gospel? And how are you cultivating those relationships? So if you have some time to think about that, I'll turn off the camera, and then, wait a minute, I forgot to tape out our people. I'm not just going to turn you off. Look at those questions, and then you can join us next week.